...a presentation tonight from the WOW Trail Committee. I believe Mr. Beadle is with us tonight.
You know, I was really hoping it would be on TV, so if this isn't on TV...
Welcome, yeah, this is gonna be a big disappointment. I think you might have been a ratings killer, anyway.
Thank you, Ed. We'll see about that.
You got an extra?
Do you have extras?
This is about a 45-minute presentation. Ed's asked me to do it in 20, so I'm gonna be...
I'm sorry, I think 15, right?
15?
15, yeah.
Do I hear 15?
I give you five.
Can you pull down the screen?
Thank you, Alan. Good to see you, too. Okay, first order of business is we're selling tickets for the WOW Sweepstakes Ball. They're $100. Gets you and a guest into the party and a chance to win $10,000, and that's good for everyone out here, too. Okay? So I'm here tonight. My name's Alan Beadle. I reside in Laconia. I'm currently serving as President of the WOW Trail. I'm happy to see our past president here, Diane Hanley. We're here tonight to ask the council to begin the process of approving Phase Two of the WOW Trail. Now, let's just discuss time here. How much time do I have?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to know, do you want me to get it down under 20 minutes, or...
If you can, 15 to 20.
15 to 20, okay. So, we want to have a public hearing on this matter, so we're gonna cover three specific items that we'll be asking you to consider. Administrative action for Scott to sign on behalf of Phase Two construction, and then there's the matter that we've seen in the newspapers regarding the elimination of a right-hand turn lane and the elimination of 12 parking spots. But I'd like to cover some ground before we get there. I'd like to thank a lot of people, because we're at a point now where we've built one phase, we're about to perhaps build a second phase, and we've been doing this, how many years, Diane, 12? Five on Phase Two. And I want to take a moment to thank all of our board members, past and present, all of the volunteers, literally hundreds of volunteers, thousands of volunteer hours each year. There's a lot of civic organizations and community organizations that make this happen, and the people in City Hall who make this happen, including the city manager, planning, parks and rec, police, and DPW in particular. We wouldn't be here tonight without the financial support of a lot of people. Literally, thousands of our Laconia residents have contributed to this. Hundreds of businesses have contributed to this, and along with the TIF Advisory Board and your approval, a big chunk from the city in this phase. In addition, we have $100,000 from the CDFA, which is the first time the CDFA has ever given money to this kind of a project. All right, I'm gonna get in trouble here now. So, I'd like to say a couple things first about myself. This was suggested by my boss, and I first want to tell you that I'm a board member for the Bellknap Economic Development Council, and I'm on the fundraising committee for the Colonial Theater. And the reason I tell you that is because I want you to know I'm interested in economic development, specifically in downtown Laconia. I'm not interested so much in theater, it's not really my thing, but I am interested in a vibrant downtown. And the other thing I want you to let you know about me is that I literally travel all over the place with my bicycles and my wife and my friends, and we go all over the place on these kinds of trails. And when we go, we spend lots of money. There's a picture of my wife in front of the Ross Castle in Killarney, Ireland, and there's a picture of this beautiful... Look at that on the upper right that goes across a big inland waterway in Florida. I mean, the money they're spending in Florida, I could spend a lot of time on pictures here, but I'm not. But my point is, is that I do know something about these rail trails. So some of the things I'm gonna tell you tonight really do come from some of my experiences. Study after study will show, and I'm just gonna... See, we like to eat and drink when we go, and that's the point of that one. All right, here we go. So, I want to remind you that the mission of our organization, the WOW Trail, is to build a 10-mile trail from Belmont to Meredith. That's what our mission is, and we're trying to fulfill that, and this is an important meeting tonight. We've been given approval by the owner of the property, which is the state of New Hampshire, to use this land for this project. And I will tell you that this 10-mile trail will be a world-class amenity, bringing economic, recreation, and health benefits to this community for generations. Just not words, this is what happens when you build things like this. Study after study will show, and we did a study in 2012, and, you know, you can buy it or not buy it, but it says that 38,000 people from out of area will come each year to use this trail. And they'll spend around $2 million when they come each year on retail and shopping and staying over places, or they'll extend their stay. I perhaps, I think that's low, those estimates. We view this project as a key piece to the revitalization of downtown Laconia. Okay. So, we have some experience to draw upon here. We built one phase. It only took 10 years, but we built it. So now we have some things to look at. In 2010, we opened up Phase One of the WOW Trail with tremendous success, 40,000 people a year. We've done two studies, are using this trail. And we have all sorts of civic groups that are pitching in to make this a beautiful spot. Here's the Opichi Garden Club that's made this entrance at Lakeport a beautiful spot. This is a great example of a public-private partnership where the Lake Opichi Inn gave us parking for trail users, we gave them a beautiful granite stairway up to the trail for their customers. And that's what we have there. If you remember what that place used to look like not too long ago, it's come a long way. You know, there was big concerns when we built Phase One. People standing here, talking to you, citing safety, vandalism, "You can't build this trail. Don't let it come through our neighborhood." These actually are the children of one of the women who spoke there, six, seven years ago. These are her children. They're out on the trail enjoying this down in the Molten Street area. This is a more beautiful and a safer place to go since we put in this trail. And the PD will back us and has given us a letter regarding that. And you can see some of the amenities, murals and so forth that is doing this. So, you know, I show you this to remind you of the transformation of this corridor of Phase One before we get going in Phase Two. This is what it looked like behind Canton Chevrolet, and this is what it looks like today. And this is standing on North Main Street, the library to our right, the federal building to our left, and this is what it looks like today. So while we've cut some trees and got prepared for Phase Two, and it looks like hell out there, it looks horrible, you're gonna see a beautification of the area when we put this phase through. So this is where it starts, right here in North Main Street, heading to Belmont. And we're gonna connect to a 1.8-mile trail that Belmont is building today, and we'll have over four miles of rail trail. And now we're getting interesting. Now you're getting to the length where people from Plymouth or Concord, they might say, "You know what? Let's throw the cars in the... Let's throw the bikes in the car, and let's go up to Laconia, and let's do an eight-mile out and back." We're starting to get to a point where we're gonna see economic benefits from this trail. You don't see that from Laconia to Lakeport. It's too short. Nobody's gonna travel to do that. But at four miles, four and a half, you're gonna start to see that. So there's a lot of interesting things that goes on with Phase Two that I wanted to share about. And one of them is getting people safely across a downtown area. We've got North Main Street, Pleasant Street, you see here, Fair Street, all busy intersections. And look at, look at what we have here. I mean, trying to figure out a better mousetrap here. And Scott was in charge, you can see. But no, this is our engineer from H.G. Bergeron, the Bureau of Rail, Department of Transportation, Public Works. You know, they're all here trying to figure out the best way through. So when we talk about what we came up with for design, it's not coming up with this lightly. The infamous shed, I could go on at length, but I'm gonna just tell you that took three and a half years to get around. And with the generosity of Denise Littlefield, the daughter of Lionel Labonte, who was the originator of Stratum Tire, during our work with this, Lionel passed, and Denise, his daughter, picked up the ball, and she's made a gift to the city to go around that historic building, so we can continue on here. Looking from Water Street towards Bartlett Beach is the trestle. You can barely see is the trestle, and at the end is Fair Street. And without the help of... Thank you very much, Rick Foster from the Citizen Building, we would have to get out and get out on the road. And it's never as good on the road. People love to be away from traffic on these trails. So we're gonna skirt the back of that parking lot, and we're gonna go up the side of the building, out to the sidewalk, over the Fair Street Bridge, and back into the railroad corridor, a very short distance, unlike Messer Street on Phase One. So, again, another abutment stepping up to help make this happen. So I wanted to show you this because this is kind of interesting. What we find as we go out and look at the Bureau's land, the state's land, is a lot of people forget where the property lines are. They just forget. And it's not necessarily intentional, but they just start using state land as their own, and then they think it's their own. And so while I was taking this picture, the person who lives in the house on the right came out, and he said, "Hey, you with the WOW Trail?" And I'm like, "Uh-oh." And I said, "Yes," and he said, "How long do I have to clear this area?" I'm like, "That's the attitude we're looking for." So I told him, "With your approval, he'd need to have that cleared by July." Now also, it's hard to see, but there's a big steel beam holding up a roof there, and that also is in the state right away and also needs to go, and the state is working with that landowner to get rid of that. It's still standing. This was taken last Thursday. I now know what a vernal pool is, Diane. And a vernal pool is a part-time wetland, and there are critters that live in those little pools. And that's why, for the very first time, we're building a boardwalk. And so, in fact, it's a local builder who will be building that boardwalk and coming across it so those things can survive. But that's, again, another challenge we had of Phase Two. We have a bike shop on that building in the back there, and the guy can't wait for this trail to come down there. I wanted to point out, this is not a challenge area. This is the very easy area here, but it's, this is probably one of the highlights of Phase Two. When we come through here with the trail, I think a lot of people are gonna discover Bartlett Beach. It's kind of an underused amenity we have, a hidden gem. I mean, it's beautiful, but it's, sometimes it's sketchy. There's not a lot of people there. People might not feel comfortable. But like Phase One, when you start introducing lots of people regularly coming through there, people who are doing illegal behaviors go somewhere else. So I think we're gonna see this park and this beach really flourish when the WOW Trail opens up. So here's the first, too. We have Derky Brook at the end of the beach area that we need to cross, so we're putting in our first bridge. It's a prefab bridge that'll come in, we'll assemble it on site. Some abutments need to be poured. And when we get across, kind of something like that, then we cut across the railroad tracks to the south side of the tracks. That's Mr. DuPont's house there. And the other interesting thing about this location is it's the first place the Bureau of Rail is allowing us to use split rail as a fence, instead of a chain-link fence. So we're really excited to get that out there and see how people, what people think of that. Obviously, the Bureau's allowed that for, so that it will just look nicer out there, be more aesthetically pleasing. Okay, and this, now we're on the south side, and it takes us down to this area here. And unfortunately, all we're gonna do here is fix the fencing as we tie into the sidewalk that goes up to the Belmont Town Line. Why aren't we fixing the sidewalk that's all bumpy and so forth? The answer is, we wanted to repave that and widen it. And the Bureau of Rail said, "If you're going to do that, you're gonna have to move that trail like five feet to the left, including the whole fence and the sidewalk," which then gets us into retaining walls on the left-hand side. So for now, the sidewalk will stay as is. Any questions about, that's pretty much Phase Two. I'm gonna, I've got some more here. I'm gonna show you what we've gone through for permits and approval. We, all these permits and approvals are in hand, and the only thing we need is approval from you and the planning board. We have since changed the final design that the planning board will need to review and go through that process, but we wanted to go to you first because there's significant street, the parking issue and the elimination of the right-hand turn lane. But, you know, it's quite a bit of work to get that done. Funding, I said, we got $100,000. We sold our, we sold all of our tax credits, $125,000 worth, to the local business community, netting us $100. We have $400 from your approval to let the city fund that, with being financed from the TIF account. We've raised, fundraised, got grants, fundraisers, donations, $588,000 since the last, this is going back now, probably four years on this. And then this year, we were good for at least $35,000. That's just rock-solid $35,000. And what we're, you'll see, we're gonna need a little bit more. So that's 1.123 is what we've got for source of funds, use of funds. We've already upgraded the Fair Street Bridge. As a matter of fact, is it, I think it's 2010. Diane was thinking, she was thinking ahead. So that's been paid for, $160,000 in engineering, design, legal, surveying, that's all paid for. But we're really, really pleased that Lyman Construction was the low bid on this. Not only were they the low bid, but they were the most prepared bid, according to our engineer. And they feel really comfortable, our engineer and Lyman feels very comfortable with the number we have here to get this project done. What we're not quite sure of is construction oversight, and we're estimating 25, it's right in the ballpark. I hope I can reduce that, but I'm not sure. And we put in a 10% contingency. The engineer was very comfortable to put in 5%, but we do have a couple of things, pole relocations and some landscaping, that I felt more comfortable putting it to 10. So if you do the math there, we're short $76,000. Now, I want to let the city council know that that shortage, I'm calling it unfunded estimate of $76,000, will not prevent us from starting this summer and being substantially finished this fall, if we have your approval. We have grants that are out, $60,000 worth of grants. We have other fundraising opportunities. There is no way that that will hold us up. Is there any questions on that?
I got a question.
Yeah?
Question for Councilor Balance.
I thought that the rail fencing that you were gonna use down along Wintisquama as you head out towards Belmont...
Yep.
I thought that the exception that they gave to DuPont for the rail was because he had two entrances and access, but the rest of the trail up to Belmont was going to be still chain-linked. Am I wrong about that?
I believe you are. I believe we have approval all the way down to the end. Now, it started with DuPont property, and we didn't want to have, we've got a wood bridge, then we've got split rail, and we asked them to just carry the split rail to the DuPont prop, Joyce property, excuse me.
Yeah. And they gave you permission to do that?
I believe they did. I could be wrong on that.
Well, I haven't checked this for a while.
Mrs. Gandini is nodding yes.
That was just my recollection.
Yeah, I can have an answer back to you on that. I'm sorry, but I'm not sure.
Mrs. Gandini is nodding yes.
Yes.
That's what, yeah, I was, yep.
For the record, Mrs. Gandini is the Executive Director of the WOW Trail Committee.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So, if I could just make sure we all understand this. What you're saying is, is that at this very moment, you're $76,000 short of paying for the completion of Phase Two, but are entirely confident that that money will be in hand by the time the project is complete this fall?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's three specific city council actions that need to take place for this to move forward. The first is authorization for Scott to execute documents, or the city manager to execute documents related to constructing Phase Two. So these would, these are probably most, but maybe not all, of what he would need to sign. There could be multiple change orders. Scott, are you aware of anything else besides these that come to mind? But they're, essentially, it's conducting business for this project and signing on behalf of the city for this project.
I think that's the bulk of it there. There could be something else, but I think that's the lion's share, yes.
The second item is elimination of a right-hand turn lane on New Salem Street. Now, New Salem really cuts and turns hard into North Main, and if you see where that wheelchair is, they're not even over to the sidewalk yet, but there's, there's literally no room to put in a crosswalk there, which is kind of the obvious place for us to put this crosswalk. But there was no room. So we started looking, ugh, we looked way too many different possibilities here, and came back to this and said, "This is the best place. This is the safest crossing, parallel to the railroad tracks. The Bureau requires us to be a certain distance away." So we said, "Well, let's look at the right-hand turn lane." And we did a traffic study on the right-hand turn lane, and that study was done Gold, is it? Gold Consulting, I think they do work for the city. They concluded, and I have this in your packet, the overall effect will not be noticeable. They talked about a wait time on average of 3.4 seconds to 3.7 seconds for the driver. So people can still turn left and right, they just don't have a designated right-hand turn lane.
Have you provided the raw data for this survey?
I have it with me. I did not make copies for everyone. It's about 25 pages.
Well, I don't wanna look at it. I just wanna make sure that...
He, yeah, I do have that.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we do some kind of internal review of that, of that raw data. Have we done that?
It's been presented. I know staff has looked at that, and I think Mr. Beadle's correct, that the overwhelming majority of traffic movement there is turning left. There's minimal, and the right-hand turn still can occur, it just wouldn't be in the dedicated lane. So from staff's position, there's no concern from a traffic queuing issue if that right dedicated turn lane were to go away.
Okay. So you, you've actually internally reviewed the raw data?
I've reviewed it from a higher level, but some of our staff have reviewed it in much more detail, yes.
Okay.
Has anybody looked at the safety aspect of all of the pedestrians and bicycles coming across one of probably the second busiest...
Yeah.
...street in the city?
The answer is yes.
Coming north and south.
We've, we've looked at it in minutia and concluded that that is the best place to cross. In fact, one of the interesting things now is, you may, council, if you're down in that area, you'll see people are crossing there. They treat the railroad tracks as a crosswalk. Cars tend to slow a little bit, and pedestrians tend to use that. Well, we've got the WOW Trail there for one reason, but you have to go up further north to a crosswalk or down to the lights to another, and people... That wasn't you I saw this morning, councillor, was it? Armin crossing right there? No, I'm just teasing you. We were together. I made him, I made him. So to answer your question, we think it's the safest spot, Brenda. Okay, here's the, here's the difficult one. That's, sorry, just another picture here. This is taken a couple winters ago, but just to show you, here's effectively the elimination of the right-hand turn lane in the winter, with snow pushed to the right-hand turn lane, and that's all frozen, and that's been there. And I don't think the city had any...
At that point in time, the right-hand turn lane was not plowed.
Correct. That's what I'm saying, yep. Effectively, you had no right-hand turn lane. Okay, so here's, here's the difficult one. Elimination of 12 parking spots on New Salem Street. This stretch is from Pittman's Freight Room to the Pleasant Street. There's 12 parking spots there. We did everything we could. We actually have a design that has a very narrow WOW Trail, narrower parking, narrower lanes, and a shifted curb on the far side. And when it was all done, it was concluded it was not safe for the pedestrians and bicyclists coming down the trail. It was just too close, cars parking, doors opening, people getting hurt. We could not, we could not go with that design. It's just not feasible to squeeze everything in and do it safely there. And that forced the change to eliminate those spaces. Now, understanding the current, the concerns of Pittman's Freight Room in particular, and the downtown community in general, we looked for how to make up these 12 spaces. We worked with neighbors there who have property. We had, we had an understanding to put in 25 parking spot, actually across the street, but that fell apart. We met with other business owners and asked them if we could get some municipal parking, and to no avail. And it was certainly my plan to be able to come here with a backup for this 12 on-street parking. I understand how sensitive this issue is. Nevertheless, we don't have it. I do have some observations I'll share, and that is, first of all, during business hours, these 12 spots often look like this. I would say on average, there's two or three cars there during business hours. We asked the largest employer, Bank of New Hampshire, "Do you have a problem with these 12 spots going away?" And the answer was, "No, we don't have a problem with that." You know, so from a, what, what we're concerned about is Pittman's Freight Room and the loss of those spots, because when they're busy, those spots are full. So we looked at, how do we, how do we find some solutions for these guys? The first thing that comes to mind is their own parking lot. Could be better designed for more cars. It's a grass field, and when I go back to park there for an event, it's park, park however you want, and it, it's not efficient. There could be more cars parked back there. Secondly... Hi, Chief. I don't know if this is a solution. I have not talked to the chief about this.
I know what you're gonna ask.
Yep.
Somebody else already did.
There's, well, maybe we could ask again, I don't know. But, you know, there's 19 spots to the left of the police department, close on the Pittman side. You know, I don't know whether there can be some arrangement that Pittman's could make use of that, those 19 spots at the PD on Friday and Saturday nights, or, and maybe that's the busy time, the PD, I don't know, but maybe, Chief, that's why you're here, to comment on that? I don't know.
No, I come to all of yous.
Okay.
But I can comment.
So, yeah, let me finish up, and you can jump in, okay? You know, also, so that's just, just an option that could be there. You know, I counted over 250 parking spots in neighboring businesses that are typically unused when Pittman's events are in progress. Over 250 spots within 150 yards or so of their front door. That's across the street here. It's at the plumbing, is it plumbing business in Water Culligan, I think? That's Stratum Tire, which will have a sidewalk right to their front door, 67 Water Street across the tracks. You know, there's, there's parking out there. I don't know if there's the potential for Pittman's to make arrangements with any of those. I don't know that they've even talked with anyone other than the Salvation Army property. I don't know if they've talked, but I, I think there may be a possibility for them there. Now, lastly, Dr. Tom Finn, my dentist, is moving his practice to the corner... Now, lastly, Dr. Tom Finn, my dentist, is moving his practice to the corner of Pleasant and New Salem, that, that empty lot. And Tom, I have a letter in your packet from, from Tom that would agree to public parking during non-business hours. He doesn't want it to affect his business practice, but during evenings and weekends, he would allow public parking there. That would be, he said, 40 spots, but he doesn't have a plan done yet, so I'm thinking if we say 30 to 40 spots, we're going to be closer to make sure we're accurate on that. But that's not going to happen immediately, it's not going to be available immediately, but Tom knows our situation, I explained it to him, and he's, he wants to help. So I'm just going to say some final thoughts on the matter. As I said earlier, we view this project, Phase Two in particular, as a key piece of the revitalization of downtown Laconia. The WOW Trail will provide a safe and enjoyable way for people to get into Laconia without needing parking spaces. They can shop, they can get their bike serviced, they can eat, they can drink, they can experience the River Walk, they can maybe even go to the Colonial Theater without needing parking. The opportunity is now for us to proceed with Phase Two. We've been working on this phase for many years, we have the plan, we have the funding, we have the permits, we have the approvals. If this project is held up until a makeup of 12 parking spots is found, some of our funding may expire, other funding may be used elsewhere, and it could be many years before we start this phase. So the question is, is the community willing to give up the benefits of the WOW Trail that it will bring to downtown for 12 parking spots? I know we need to do something for Pittman's, and there are options out there. But I really hope that the downtown community sees this how I see it, which I really think is a revitalization, a piece of the revitalization effort of downtown. So we ask the council to schedule a public hearing so the community can weigh in on this matter. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Beadle? Councilor Lippman?
I just want to clarify the procedural things that you're looking for here.
All right, I can clarify that, I think. So we've, they've asked for three actions, and, and those three actions are the abandonment of the right-hand turn lane, the abandonment of those 12 parking spaces between Pleasant Street and the first curve on New Salem Street there, and the, and the...